All right, we're live.
Okay, good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Troutdale Planning Commission for Tuesday, August 11th, 2020. If we can have a roll call, please.
Yep. Commissioner Ritter?
President.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I'm here.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Here.
Commissioner Glantz?
Present.
Commissioner Ramoni?
Yeah.
And Chair Stephenson?
Here. Okay, with that, we have a quorum, and at this time, we will do pledge allegiance, and those of us that are here will stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic. This time, we'll take public comment, and is anyone zoomed in or anything?
I believe Mr. Brown and Mr. Allen are in, but I believe Mr. Brown was in reference to the agenda items tonight, and Mr. Allen is...
Okay, so this will be comment on a non-agenda item. And I'm going to take that as a no.
No one in the crowd here at the Kelly Room?
Awfully quiet here at the Kelly Room.
Well, Marv's not here.
That's true. Okay, and with that, did everyone receive a copy of the minutes from the meeting of July 15th, 2020?
Yep.
Okay, corrections?
I have a few. Very last word on page two. I think she's supposed to be includes, not including. And then the sentence, first sentence on page three, she said she thought this would be more like the Troutdale Airport hangars used to be used for.
And remove and close?
Yeah. Okay. That was all I had.
Okay. Anyone else?
Commissioner Wilcox, I have a few.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Wilcox.
Page two, toward the top third, the paragraph that starts with Mr. Dangin. Second line from the bottom of that paragraph, it starts senate center area next to Harbor Christian Church should be harvest, H-A-R-V-E-S-T.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, and the next one was, next one, Sandy covered at the bottom of the page. Let's see. Page three, the very bottom, under enumerated C, I think recommend, should be capitalized. It's the second line from the bottom. Page four, you get that?
Yes, sorry, sir.
Page four, about in the middle, the paragraph that starts with Chair Stephenson. That paragraph, three lines up from the bottom, there's a container dimension that says eight by nine point forty. I think it should be eight by nine by forty. Page five, second from the bottom paragraph that starts with Ms. Glantz, the very end of the first line, it has Ms., Ms. Bird, should be Mr. Bird. One more on page six, the first paragraph, two lines from the bottom, census says, well, also while her personally, should be while he personally. I think that's it.
Anyone else? I just have one on page two, first paragraph, second line, commissioners will decide whether the application moves forward, should be commissioners will render a decision and the application moves forward.
Can you repeat that location, Mr. Chair?
First paragraph on page two, second line.
Oh, okay, so can you repeat your...
Should read, commissioners will render a decision and the application moves forward. Anyone else have anything? If not...
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the meeting minutes for Wednesday, July 15th, 2020, as amended.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, seconded by Commissioner Glantz to accept the minutes of July 15th, 2020, as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Okay. All right, that one goes. Now, on to the big event. Okay, so for tonight, we are having a continuation of the hearing on case file 7504, text amendment, storage facilities, development code, text amendment. It's a type four hearing. Okay, so we'll run through the hearing procedure again, although this is a continuation of that hearing. And so, before we begin the hearing, I'd like to explain a little about the Planning Commission and the procedures that will be following for the public hearing. Planning Commission is an appointed seven-member volunteer body of Troutdale citizens. Members of the Planning Commission are Troutdale residents who have been appointed by the city council. They serve four-year terms. They are strictly volunteers and receive no pay for their services. The Planning Commission serves as a citizen committee for the review of land use applications and various land use-related matters within the city. Items which the Planning Commission consider include uses of land, subdivisions, major variances, land use policy plans, and development regulations. For some land use applications, the Planning Commission makes a final decision. For other applications, they are simply making a recommendation to the city council who renders the final decision. Quasi-judicial public hearings are held in accordance with Oregon law and procedures contained in the Troutdale Development Code. The hearing proceeds as follows. City staff presents their report, which includes applicable criteria and standards for the matter under consideration in the land use application. All testimony and evidence should be directed towards these criteria. If you believe that other criteria in the comprehensive plan, development code, or other city land use regulations apply, you must identify these criteria and explain why they apply to the decision. Planning Commission accepts public testimony relating to the application. The applicant is allowed to speak first, followed by proponents, then by opponents, and then by any parties neutral to the application. An opportunity will be provided for anyone testifying to clarify any issues raised. All issues raised by a participant during the public hearing must be sufficiently clear and specific to allow the Planning Commission and other parties an opportunity to respond to those issues. Failure to raise an issue during this public hearing may invalidate a future appeal based on that issue. Prior to closing the public hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission must grant the request by either continuing the public hearing to a future date, or by leaving the record open for at least seven days to admit only that specific additional written evidence or testimony. If the record is left open for additional written evidence or testimony, any participant may file a written request for an opportunity to respond to new evidence submitted during the period the record was left open. If such a request is filed, the Planning Commission shall reopen the record to allow any person to raise new issues which relate to the new evidence, testimony, or criteria for decision-making. Tonight's hearing is a type four legislative hearing, and the Planning Commission will be making a recommendation to the city council, who will be rendering the final decision. And before we open the public hearing, there's a couple of housekeeping issues. Commissioner Witteren, you were not present for the first hearing, but you have received the minutes from that hearing, and my question would be, do you wish to participate in the hearing and the deliberations this evening?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Any challenge from the commission? Okay. All right. And so, since we are doing a continuation of the hearing that was held on July 15th, staff will not be doing an updated report, correct? Just an overview?
Just saying, what we'll do is, we will show, again, just for the record, what had been kind of left on the table during deliberation, so we'll show that, and then we'll remind you that the decision criteria had not been discussed to be amended at that last meeting, and we can show those. We'll have the screen available for you, but we were not intending a full re-presentation of what we had before.
Okay. And also, for members of the public, there is no need to testify to something that you testified to at the prior meeting, that is on the record, and if you need to testify this evening, it should be to something that has not been testified to as additional testimony. Okay, and last thing, before we open, does anyone have any conflict of interest to declare on this application? No? Okay. With that, we will open the record on the continuation of the public hearing for case file 7504, text amendment, a type four hearing.
Okay, just checking your respective screens, do you all see a Word document open? It should have highlights and some red marks and the editions standard font?
Yes.
Does everyone have that on their screen? Okay. Thank you. So again, as the chair alluded to, the staff provided the full presentation at the last meeting on July 15th. The hearing had been, was closed at that time, the deliberation went on, and at the point where it was determined to continue the hearing to tonight's date, there were a couple of proposals that were set forth as far as changes to the draft of what we had, and they were, in particular, regards to the purpose statement component. So what you see highlighted in yellow were contributions or additions that were suggested at the last hearing. What you see in red was items that were struck through. To be clear, the strike through the outdoor accessory storage, that was one of the original proposed modifications that staff had come up with, and the consideration at that time was, rather than have it listed like that, tack in significant outdoor accessory storage to the end of that sentence. There was also discussion about using little versus limited. The staff had proposed limited, and I don't believe there was a change to that, at least that suggested, but it was certainly brought up in discussion. What was not shown as far as any sort of changes or suggestions or any changes to definitions, there was, I think, some considerable thought about whether or not the definitions may need to change, but I think that was a part of the waiting period as far as contemplating what was being proposed. So what staff is prepared to do tonight is keep this document open, and that way folks will be able to see any changes that you may have during deliberation, but right now, again, you're in hearing, so you'd have to go through hearing protocol before you enter deliberation where any of these potential word changes need to take place. So with that, again, no changes either to the decision criteria, so everything that was in your packet previously remains the same, other than what you see here on your screen, to purpose statements, suggestions, not final outcomes yet, but suggestions that were contemplated and appeared to have consensus at the time.
Okay. So that's it for staff? Okay. At this time, if there was, if there's a member of the public that's wishing to testify?
Hello, this is Tracy Brown. Are you able to hear me?
You are, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I just, yeah, I didn't want to reiterate what I said, but I, last time, so I live at 17075 Fur Drive in Sandy, Oregon, and I just wanted to direct your attention to the meeting minutes where I testified, and there was, I had suggested a couple of changes that, for you to consider. I just want to, you know, rather than going back through those, I just, if you do would like to consider those, those are in your meeting minutes already. That's, that's the only thing I have to say, and, you know, we're supportive of the change and moving this on to the city council. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any questions for Mr. Brown from the commission? Anyone else wishing to testify? There's someone trying to connect, I see. Modo Efa. Don't know who that is. Okay. All right. If there's no other public wishing to testify, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay. Okay, a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, seconded by Commissioner Glantz to close the public hearing on case file 7504. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? That carries. All right. Here we go.
And Mr. Chair, again, staff is prepared to have the document open for anybody wishing to make any edits. We can also reference back to the minutes as Mr. Brown had suggested too, for any of their proposed edits. What we would probably request you do, just for proceeding, is if you can call each commissioner for their particular comments, at least with the initial round, so that way, what we can do then is have a shared screen, so people can see as far as what might be proposed. Staff is going to work off the staff report packet that you all should have had originally, so we'll have it on the screen as well.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone wishing to start?
I know you're surprised.
Commissioner Glantz, please.
So, thank you all for letting us spend a little extra time on this. It basically came down to three different concerns for me, and one was being next to residential areas, some kind of environmental issues, and wanting padding, perhaps not an entire area asphalted, but just at least where something was temporary, that there was something solid underneath it, rather than just gravel. And then my third concern was level of visibility, and this had to do as much with location. I mean, if I'm, if this is someplace that a lot of people look, or it's someplace that, you know, has a scenic view, I would want it to be not just, you know, have an eight-foot fence around it, but to actually have some landscaping, something that helps it look better. And my question is, I noticed in the definitions, the last sentence there, it says, uses, where'd it go? I think it was up there before. Maybe I'm in the wrong area then. Yeah, keep going, right there. Uses within the light industrial district may be located adjacent to residential uses with appropriate buffering. In my perspective and experience, appropriate buffering can be some trees that are five feet tall, that maybe if they survive in 15 or 20 years, provide screening, and I don't think that's enough protection next to residential. So I would either want something in there that is, you know, more along the lines of blocking, you know, visually blocking, or just not having it next to residential. And I know these are conditionally uses to start with, but I would hope that we could maybe put something in there about the concerns, rather than, you know, coming back later and saying, well, you know, it's next to residential, and not, you know, these homes don't necessarily want to have all these different people coming and going at all hours of the night and day, accessing stuff that they sell, or whatever. Those are my concerns.
Okay.
And suggested solutions.
Anyone else? Commissioner Pritchett, please.
I agree with Sandy. My concern is that, granted, they're supposedly leak-proof, but they are metal, and they do, if they're not properly, if there's a moisture barrier not applied, they will, can have condensation on the inside. I'm also worried about what will be stored that we can, we have no control over, like pesticides, and especially if it's a yard or landscaping business, how those will be protected from leaking into the groundwater. I'm really concerned that there is no protocols for any kind of safety to protect the environment or the residential. Again, I don't think a residential is, next to residential is a good place either, but I'm worried that there could be a potential for hazardous materials being stored in a container.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I...
Mr. Ramoni?
Thank you. I think I'm going slightly in a different direction. I think I felt, and I do feel today, comfortable with the language that the staff had presented at the July 15th meeting, with or without Mr. Brown addition. And I do appreciate, and I understand the concern of Commissioner Glantz about buffering. What I hope is that those could be discharged under the requirements and under the language of the buffer code, the buffer section of the code. I must imagine that our code is very explicit about buffering within different areas, different users, but my concern at this point is we need to take care of the comprehensive overarching language of the storage with, with the changes that we have discussed over a couple meetings. So I am completely comfortable with, with the direction we're taking, which was originally to segregate storage from warehouses, storage facility, and storage accessory. I think that was the original goal, and to me, still remain the original goal. What I'm concerned, and I think I voiced it last time, at the end of our long meeting, was that it is, it is, it is difficult to find a solution to every possible potential future outcome. It is a, almost impossible proposition, and so I don't believe that is the scope of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission's scope, I believe, is to have a vision and to create a comprehensive approach, and as much as we would like to be perfect, I don't think it is possible. I don't think we can foresee what is coming in the future. I don't think we can shape social behavior to the extent it would become a rule and regulation. So for what it was meant to be, this exercise, I am completely in favor with what staff had presented on July 15th, with or without Mr. Brown amendment, and I'm concerned about as well, like Commissioner Glantz, about buffering, but I hope that that is going to be taken care of by the buffer requirements of our code. Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Wilcox, any comments?
Yes, I have a couple, thank you. Since you got that screen up, under storage accessory, on the purpose statement that Chris showed earlier, 3.161, it referred to outdoor in at least two different locations, but under your definition, I don't see any reference to outdoor at all. And, but my main concern is, under 1.127, portable, portable isn't defined at all. That could be, as I mentioned at the last meeting, you know, it could be shipping containers, could be semi-trailers with staircases. Another option I thought of just today was, you can actually put up tents, like they do for the fireworks vendors, that could be considered portable storage. So I think that the whole idea of portable really needs to be defined and elaborated upon. And one other thing, under the criterions later on, talks about security such as fencing and, you know, closed-circuit TV, for example. Those aren't required anywhere, it's kind of optional, so that's kind of a question in my mind. I think that's all I have for now, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Witteren, anything?
I would reiterate what Mr. Ramoni had to say, that, you know, reading through all the minutes, reading through the text amendments that the staff suggests, I am very comfortable, I agree, portable needs to be defined, but I also agree that to make everybody happy is nearly impossible, and when we talk about buffering, in the community of Troutdale, they want the storage, but yet don't want the noise, don't want the look, don't want, there has to be a happy medium. So, but what staff has written here is very comfortable, but I do agree, yes, as well, portable needs to be defined, but I think there is already ordinances in place when we talk about noise and time limits of, that the noise can be happening, there has to be already, you know, those could already be addressed in other ways. That's all I got.
Okay. Mr. Ramoni, did you have your hand up again, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you very much, and this was a follow-up consideration to Commissioner Wilcox's concern, and I am, because of where I come from, very careful about the meaning of words, semantics has a strong meaning, obviously, and I agree that that word might open itself to interpretation, but if I understand correctly, what we're trying to go in the direction, these storage facilities are going to be reviewed under the clause of a conditional use, and so that, to me, is where we can, this is one of the situations where we are allowed to be a little more lenient with our wording, because those cases are going to come individually in front of the commissioner, and if any of us or none of us are happy with what we see, inclusive of the meaning of that wording, there is opportunity to fix it, and to be very restrictive, and go in a completely opposite direction to be lenient. So I am not concerned, in a different situation, if this was a principal permitted use, then yes, but again, I think the staff has, has done, has thought about it, under the concern and the vision of the commissioner, and maybe the council, that there wasn't a need for some flexibility, and having the storage facility under conditional use allowed exactly the flexibility for scrutiny, so, and also for be a little more lenient with the wording. So I am concerned, but not very much. The word can stay there, because individual cases are going to come in front of us, and we're going to be the judges of that. Thank you.
Okay. And I would agree, I think staff has done a very good job, I want to be clear about that, you know, this isn't a criticism of staff, and, you know, we already have storage facilities, so this is getting our code cleaned up, getting the record right. I think the challenge that some people are having is the container issue. And I just want to make a couple of quick comments before we go forward. One is, and I don't know that you can fix this, or how you fix this, I'm involved with a facility that has a storage container... I'm involved with a facility that has a storage container, and it butts up against residential. It's commercial property that butts up against residential. And I would say the only time that's an issue is when you open and close those containers. It's usually a pretty loud little squeak that comes out. But again, I think that's just part of things, and that would probably fall under the noise ordinance of seven AM to ten PM. So, you know, I also don't feel there's a perfect solution. But, you know, when we take these things on, each time we deal with what's happening at that time and try to best write the code to fit what is happening and what we foresee to happen, that's not always necessarily what does happen. Okay, so as we come through this, I think we're a little bit split. And so, Mr. Ramoni, you're recommending to change this all back to what staff had originally? Was that your recommendation?
I would say I lean in that direction. Again, I understand that Mr. Brown had made some comments, and I'm fine with those. If staff is okay with it. But yes, my original motion would be to accept as presented on July fifteen, and with whatever amendment suggested that staff feels comfortable with. Because the last thing I want to do is compromise the integrity of the code. So if the director and the staff feels comfortable, I'm fine with it. But July fifteen would be my motion, yeah.
Just for the record, Mr. Chair, we did not incorporate Brown's suggestions into the staff report, because again, the staff report stood prior to the hearing. So if there's a desire to examine his comments, that's fine. We can pull them up, but they were not included in the report, nor do we have a formal opinion on it. One point of clarification, I think we do want to make sure of the, what you have on the screen right now with the yellow highlights and the strike through, staff has no concern for merit on that. That's, I think, just trying to better encapsulate what the purpose again, this is a purpose statement, not a dimensional standard or anything that really carries weight as far as evaluating criteria, but it speaks to what you're trying to accomplish holistically for that open district.
Okay.
The other thing I'm sorry to add is that if there is no desire tonight to consider some of Mr. Brown's proposals, he does have, of course, the right to bring them up at city council, and they can entertain those amendments at that level, too.
Okay, so do we want to? Would you like me to read, Mr. Brown? Comments?
I can pull them up, too.
Okay, go ahead and pull them up.
One moment to do that.
Okay.
Can everyone see the meeting minutes from the fifteen?
Yes.
Screen?
Okay. Page five, third paragraph down. Okay, so he talked about accessory storage being lumped in with the general. And then says he's comfortable with it being included in the definition, the purpose statement, I should say. Okay, any second one suggests storage facilities be added to the list. His conclusion is it provides additional business opportunities. And all the facilities are non-conforming, so if something happened to any of them, they couldn't be rebuilt. Would you need to add it to the list to do?
I'm sorry, do you need for?
Would you need to add it to the list? Because wouldn't they already be on there?
Well, I think that's that list, and I can go to reference it. Chapter eight was important of our text amendment, but if it can be, if this is a desire, let me grab that real quick. Okay, Commissioners, I'm going to stop share just this screen for one moment. I'm going to pull it into our development code so you can see the reference section here. One moment while I do that. Okay, can everyone see now the development code should be a PDF document starting with eight point zero three zero? So I believe we're talking about the addition here, so eight point three zero, zero three zero, item six right here. The proposal, as I'm reading here from the minutes, the proposal is to add the word outdoor accessory storage areas in the last sentence. So right now it just says outdoor storage areas. Now, there is an et cetera at the end of it, but that might just better, that just might be a way of ensuring that a time definition as established in the code gets incorporated in that. And this is, again, talking about required pedestrian walkways. This is the section, this is a site and develop, site and design standards section that we would apply for new or significant expansion of development activity within that would be occurring. So what basically what we're saying, or what's being said, again, pedestrian walkways are required between those parts of the site that people and normally would walk between. Walkways are not required between buildings, portions of the site which are not intended or likely to be used by pedestrians. So basically what we're saying is that the walkway standards for internal circulation, which is normally public facing or before a gate, would not necessarily, would not be required in these types of storage facilities, where the outdoor storage facilities.
What would the setbacks be? They'd be the same?
Yeah, no, the setbacks wouldn't change. This is usually, so this standard is usually for suburbs, say, shopping centers, or, you know, campus-style type properties where you have to have a, if it is in fact access to the public and people are trying to get from a parking area to a building, or they're going between buildings, and it's designed for for a safe route that is not in the middle of the driveway or a parking area. That's the skirt it has here. And what's being said here is that certain buildings, truck loading docks, warehouses, again, warehouses is already listed for its proposed definition, or amended definition, I should say. And then the idea of adding storage facilities to that, because the idea there is that the storage facility where these items are being stored, whether internal, external, or portable, would be in an enclosed area, or would be within an impound lot or a gated secured area. So it's not, you're not going to require a typical ADA pedestrian way in those areas.
Right. And I also don't see a lot of truck traffic into those things, like we'd see in another situation.
Yeah, I'd like to add that this was also something that applied to the recent FedEx application that we had. So since they were expanding their parking lot, but not actually for, it's just to, for truck storage, that pedestrian walkway requirement didn't apply for that development. So that kind of goes into something in that nature, something like this in this nature. So something with a storage facility that's like an outdoor storage like this, it would probably be closer in use to these FedEx applications that we have.
And then from the staff perspective, there would not be heartburn by throwing this type of use, meaning storage facility into this exemption right here, because that's just the nature of how these properties are usually developed anyway.
You feel it'd be applicable?
We feel, yeah, we don't have any heartburn by adding that.
All right.
But again, we had not previously attempted to amend chapter eight, so, I mean, it's well within your wheelhouse. If you want to add it there, that's fine. It would just be forwarded.
I mean, do you feel that's a necessary move at this time?
I don't think, I don't see why it wouldn't hurt. If you want, if you want to do it, that's less work than for city council to consider at that point later on. And again, it was a request of the applicant during their testimony, so it's at least worth discussing. But staff has no concern about that, if that's.
Either way. Okay, how do we feel about that? We okay with including that? We approve it?
Mr. Chair, I go back to my original statement. I'm fine with or without even. Now, after the conversation, I realize that it is just a requirement that is usually used for other things as well, but and again, it is just language to what it would be necessary potentially. So adding outdoor storage, I'm sorry, adding the storage facility after the outdoor storage and et cetera is not going to destroy the meaning of the word. With or without is irrelevant to me, but whatever the commissioner chooses for it.
Okay. All right. So no comment on that, so we're back to the purpose statement. I'm waiting to see if any, you guys, okay.
Want to make sure if anybody had their hand raised?
Yeah, I couldn't see it. Now I'm good. Okay, nobody's got their hand up. All right. Any other proposed changes to the purpose statement? Adjacent to residential is original language, right?
Right, that is original language. And for the record, too, there's only one location in the limited, in the light industrial zoning district where that occurs. I'm going to, again, I'm sorry, I'm changing screens on you very rapidly, but this may be instrumental or helpful in seeing it. Can everyone see now a zoning map on their screen?
Yes.
Okay, so the areas, the areas we're talking again that are in this zoning district are these light gray areas right here. Again, I eighty-four runs kind of across your screen here. So it's areas to the north of I eighty-four, here along Harlow Road, a couple of Portland-owned properties on the south side of the airfield, and portions of the I eighty-four corporate center. There are also areas here that are already developed that are on the north side of historic Lumberdale Highway. Once you're past downtown, as if you're heading out to the animal shelter. There are some industrial uses out there. It's a contracting company and vehicle storage. Should be made mention that those properties have largely been developed prior to this code coming into place. But they're the only instance of where we have right now LI or limited industrial zoning adjacent to residential, which are these orange and dark brown properties. And really, the dark brown property, those are properties that have yet to be constructed. That is a property that is under development. And then the orange, there are some properties here, about six of them, that are facing across the street to that limited industrial, or that light industrial zoning district. But I can pull also up a screen image of it since I'm in my browser here. You'll also see what it looks like right now as far as.
Technology.
Yeah, so I mean, this is kind of, again, this is, these are those residential properties that you saw that were kind of facing across the street. So this is the level of screening right now that is afforded those folks from that location in that, on that limited, that light industrial property. And that goes all the way down to the bridge here, where you do have some growth, but here you have some elevation change. These are conifers that were recently, or planned with in the last few years, which are much taller now. So, I mean, we do have instances right now of where you do have those interactions already. But they are, not to dismiss this one instance, but they are generally far and few between compared with most of these zone properties. And I think we would have very hard time entertaining any sort of rezoning of any other property to light industrial south of I eighty-four. It's going to be a very hard proposition.
Okay. Okay, anything else on purpose statement?
Why do we have to say that it's okay to be next to residential?
I would say this, probably that purpose statement came across during a time when Troutdale city limits were smaller. We hadn't had as much expansion from an annexation point of view north of the freeway. It was probably a carryover or a legacy, because it was original language that was copy-pasted from the development code from nineteen ninety and presumably the development code even before that. You know, I don't think there's really a lot of heartburn if you want to consider that, but you're if that's the case, that does change or kind of increases the intent of this particular text amendment. Then it becomes more of a bigger picture question, I guess.
Because it's more limited?
Well, just because, I mean, that change is something that had been in the code for a while, and that wasn't necessarily the text amendment brought forth you before you tonight and last month. So I mean, again, I don't think.
I'm not saying to necessarily put in that it's not okay, but just not even necessarily call it out.
Okay.
But isn't it even better, though, to at least saying there's a buffer, has to be a buffer there? Rather than not saying anything at all?
I mean, there has to be a buffer regardless of where they are. And our buffers aren't always effective?
Yeah, so if I've got this right, rear yard setback, there's none. Right, you're up to the property line, aside tent.
And we also don't define what appropriate means.
But I would say there are performance standards in, say, chapter eleven, that's our landscaping section, where you can apply those. And again, through the prism, and if you dialing it back to this potential land use consideration, if we're talking about a conditional use permit or a conditional use. It is within the planning commission's wheelhouse to require additional landscaping or street name standards that go above and beyond what may even just be normally required. So in the example that I just showed you there along the historic Lumberdale Highway, while the rear setbacks, which actually front the railroad in that case, are minimal, you do have certain setback requirements from the front, not to mention landscape percentage requirements for the property itself. And most development would tend to try to use the perimeter of their properties since they they can't put a building there anyway, to use those areas for landscaping and also for drainage considerations and so forth, that helps also with their stormwater planning. So, you know, obviously new construction with new vegetation and new screening will look a little barren at first in some cases, but over time, as long as they are being properly done, then they should grow. And I think the beauty also of the conditional use situation is if they are not fulfilling that or if they're not maintaining their landscaping, they're technically then in violation potentially of their conditional use approval. And they can be swept back to this body to either shape up or be shut down.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on this? I just want to clean up the purpose statement before we move on. Everyone okay?
Would, would the, just a thought, rather than the word appropriate, would significant be a better word in that location or better adjective there?
About additional?
I'm not, this is, this is your go, folks, so we'll go with whatever adjective you want, just a thought. Appropriate is not enough.
You might want to, I, if you want, you want, want to suggest a reference to Chapter 11, because Chapter 11 does have criteria of the shrubs and the maintenance of that. So that might be a suggestion to think of.
What does it say? So it's 15%. It's only the percentage that changes, correct? I believe.
There's also the plant section under G where it would say shrub fill be a minimum of one gallon in size and two feet in height.
Would adequate be a better word than appropriate? Just throwing that out there.
Yeah, we could. A little hard, I think most of those are going to be hard to quantify, but I think they could be handled in a hearing.
Oops, what about just with, just leaving it, both of those out and just saying adjacent to residential uses with buffering or with landscape buffering?
I'd rather have something in there that gives you a little more wiggle room because buffering can be a fence, buffering could be trees, buffering could be a hedge. And if you have something in there like adequate or appropriate or something, I think it gives you a little more teeth to say, hey, we want a fence and a hedge or something. Which one do you like, Mr. Staff?
Again, I think because you're conditional using this, if you're looking at it just through the prism of this proposed land use, I, I think you're fine the way it is personally. But again, I'm not a commissioner.
Okay.
And again, you're doing it through a conditional use permit.
Right. Okay. Anybody like a word or not? You're going to have to up and down this.
I like adequate.
Pardon me, Mr. Witterman?
I said I like adequate.
Okay. All right, everybody okay with adequate?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. You shaking your head, Sandy?
Hang on one moment.
To me, adequate is, it's okay, it's not.
But you could also say appropriate and, and/or adequate buffering.
I just, yeah. I would probably say adequate would pro, would replace appropriate.
Right.
More than both of them together. Okay. Okay, anything else on this? So this is what we have on the table. And I think we're going to have to vote on this. Okay, so.
Hold on a minute, sorry. I'm going to try to get it so you can see pages on the screen too, so give me one moment. Let me try to do that.
So I guess what I would say is a motion entertaining what we have in the edited language, and that would be a simple year name.
Mr. Chair, can I make a motion that we adopt the staff report from July 15, 2020, inclusive of tonight amended language?
I'll second that.
Okay, so I, for clarification, for I state the motion is you're recommending the staff language from the meeting on July 15 with these adjustments.
That is correct.
Or the staff language from July 15. Okay, with these amendments.
With this amendment tonight, we just, we just suggested, yes, correct.
Okay, everything that's on there.
And clarification too, is that including or excluding a amendment to Chapter 8, which is not included in that, but was discussed just moments ago?
Yeah, and I think we'll take that up as a separate list.
Okay, that's fine.
That's okay. Okay, so, okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Mamoni, seconded by Commissioner Witterman, to accept the purpose statement language, purpose statement, I'm sorry, for light industrial as amended. Any discussion? All right.
So we're, Chair Stephenson, are we, we're just voting on the purpose paragraph? That's it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Was there any further discussion, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, that's what I asked. I didn't hear any. Go ahead and call the roll, please.
Okay, Commissioner Witten?
Yeah.
Commissioner Prichet?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Glance?
No.
Commissioner Mamoni?
Yes.
Chair Stephenson?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, that one passes. The next item will be is do we want to make an amendment to Section 8.030?
Give me one moment to pull it up here on the screen.
And it should simply be, do we want to amend that text at this time or not? Wouldn't we have to hold another hearing since that wasn't, since that wasn't listed? Okay.
But we do have the option not to do anything and leave it for City Council, right?
Okay, to leave this to council, no. We do these changes and send them to council, and then council can do what they want with them, but they don't initiate the development code changes on their own.
And can we change it without a public notice?
We're having a little internal discussion here on that, and.
So here, here would be staff's recommendation on that, Mr. Chair. Since the attorney is not here tonight, and given that you have two hearings at City Council, you can put a note in your recommendations to City Councils. Staff can check with the city attorney ahead of time to see whether or not that's appropriate or not, to make that, that addition. Staff would believe that it could be done, but we can have the city attorney weigh in on that. And that way, at the first initial hearing, it can be recorded that that was a consideration of this body. You could take a, again, this is non-binding, but you could take at least a head count vote as far as what your general impressions are for it, but we wouldn't make that change until the second hearing at City Council, once we had legal confirmation that it could or could not be done. But you can at least provide guidance as far as what you thought of that proposal and then have, have the city attorney weigh in on it at the first hearing.
Okay. Yeah, did everyone catch that? So would we, do we want to basically, yeah, footnote this and add that to our recommendation if the city attorney deems it appropriate to do so?
And then formally, then the City Council could make that amendment in their motion at the second hearing.
Okay, so this isn't a formal.
This is a straw poll.
Right, this is straw poll, so we'll just go through and do a little head count here. Okay.
Mr. Chair, just before you do the account, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a brief consideration. As a final, as a final thought, the change is so nominal that I'm willing to get along with, with my colleagues on the, on the commission. It is irrelevant to me. But, but, but in the same, in the same breath also, it seems to exceed the scope of our original meeting, which was define storage accessories, sort of facility. But again, the change is so minimal that, that, that I'm willing to get along, even, even if it is just a recommendation to the council, that I'm willing to get along with whatever the majority of the colleagues on the commission thinks is appropriate to do.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Did staff give a clear recommendation?
Say again, please.
Did staff give a clear recommendation of what their thoughts were?
We're, we're neutral to it, quite frankly. I mean, you have the word et cetera at the end of it, and given that outdoor storage areas are listed right before it, I would think that this kind of falls under the et cetera. But again, it's, you are the keepers of this code, so we, we interpret it, obviously, but we, it's your chance to get it how you want it. Now's your chance.
I would say personally, I don't even know if it's necessary, but that's just me.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I concur with what Chris has said. To us, I think there's flexibility within the existing verbiage also, but if we want to be more specific, we all.
Sorry, my apologies.
Okay. Any further discussion? Oh, sorry. Commissioner Glance?
So the idea here is to add in accessory storage. What was the exact verbiage that was going to be added?
It was going to be storage facilities.
On top of outdoor storage areas, even though we already have warehouses.
Right, I think the thought was since we're adding the definition of storage facility to the code, should storage facility be specifically listed since it's now, or since it would be intended to be specifically defined?
I don't know that we, I, I think it's already.
Right, so I guess the, the question is, if you wish to have this added in, you would be a yes, otherwise you're a no. Okay? Yeses? No yeses? How about nos?
No.
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 Okay. Good. Done. Okay, moving along.
The other issue that came up during deliberation tonight was the concern about the terms portable and whether or not a definition, that should be defined or flushed out. That was from Mr. Wilcox, but I think echoed by a couple of people.
We put a definition in for portable?
Into the development code you're talking about? We certainly.
Or you just want to define it here?
Well, that, that, that's honestly up to the deliberation here. Portable is also defined in, in sign code, so, you know, but that, sign code also has its definitions contained within its chapter.
Right.
To be understood that that's there. You could also say something like, or portable setting such as dot, 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 and then list whatever your dot, dot, dots are within that. You don't have to have a separate definition.
Okay, that'd be easier.
Or you can use a different word altogether. We just thought portable was encompassing of something that is movable, such as a cargo shipping container, but other things too.
Portable is a pretty good industry term, so it probably works. Okay, so is that okay? We kind of just flush out portable?
So is there a specific concern as to what portable might be interpreted as that someone doesn't want?
I don't know.
Well, I, wasn't it brought up that there are portable like storage areas, like tents, like for fireworks and stuff like that that you see around? That was one of the comments I heard.
Maybe it would be better than to say what portable doesn't include.
Well, frankly, I thought Mr. Wilcox brought up a couple of really good points where if you had a trailer with stairs or a tent, those types of things would be things that we would not be looking at as portable storage.
Is it obvious when a trailer has stairs?
Pardon me?
Is it obvious when a trailer has stairs? And the reason I ask is I know some of the use cases were like Amazon delivery overflow. And I'm wondering if some of that's already built in where they might have stairs and technically be in violation. How would we know if a unit has stairs in it or not?
Well, the unit wouldn't have stairs. Stairs are kind of something that they bring up to the back of it to make it easy to get in and out of the trailer, it sits and sits up so high. I think that's what we'd be talking about when we talk about stairs.
Yeah, that, that's what I had in mind, more like a staircase to get you up to the, the floor level.
A rolling staircase almost like that could be.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be a possibility.
Six stairs and a wheel of a tractor. Okay.
So if they had the containers, I thought the idea was that they went three high. That was how some of the stuff was allowed to all fit, and that would definitely require an access point.
So that would be conditional?
Yeah, that, that is something that, that could be conditioned where that property sits again, or where, where these, a lot of these properties sit in relation to the airport, there could be some height restrictions anyways, placed by aviation authorities on it. But, you know, if you look at what, again, if you're thinking strictly now cargo shipping container, and I think what was it, eight by nine by forty, nine feet high, yes, that's 27 feet if stacked three high. But I think the other thing to keep in mind too is beyond just whatever the zoning code or the development code may, may put, there are other codes that, that factor into play here too, especially fire code. And again, if, if it's a situation where you. And again, if it's a situation where you have it through a conditional use process, fire is going to be an applicant or a commenting agency on that, and if they feel that there are issues, either in the application or, let's say it was approved, and then if they saw something that was not right, they have certain authorities where they can compel movement or shutdown or reduction of units. And that goes not just for stacking, that goes also for positioning of it, the equipment and apparatus get to it.
Right. So I think a lot of that's handy, we can cover during conditional use.
That was kind of my point, is I'm not sure that trying to call it out makes any difference, with the exception of tents. Obviously tents are something that could occur and probably should be called out as not including.
But not including tents perhaps is a...
Not including tents? I would say tents or trailers, personally.
What kind of trailers are you describing?
Just...
Like the tractor trailer?
Right.
I thought that was one of the use cases, was Amazon tractor trailer overflow.
Those were, my recollection was specifically box trucks.
Being constructed.
Okay.
Was that being constructed? Being constructed, being outfitted or...
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
So by trailers, are you also referring to...
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I would caution about, try to be, in this setting, overly specific about the language, overly refined, because the great advantage of a conditional use is that under the prescription of the conditional, the committee has plenty of latitude. It is, the conditional use is really de facto, a marketing transaction between the applicant and the commissioner. But the more and more we refine, with good intent, of course, the more and more we refine those words, the more and more we start to introduce, that latitude is become narrow and narrow and narrow. What I understand, the concern of some of my colleagues, and the thoughts about, we are not covering this, we're not covering that, there is really in some respect, no necessity to cover everything, also because as I said before, it's a difficult proposition. We are not going to find a panacea. But also, we're going to be limited, the tool of the conditional use as it is, a tool that is used at the advantage of the city through the planning commission. The more we refine the words, the more we are becoming specific, the more we have to tip our legacy to those words. And so, the more we are vague actually, the better it is for us, because again, we are going to be the gatekeeper, and anything that come, a tent or not a tent, we can say, no, it's not acceptable, no, not in this logistic, no, not in this situation, and even to the extent of start to specify the buffer, if it is, and then we're going to have to violate the definition, what is a consistent buffer or whatever buffer. The more we are vague, the more we have a lot of possibility to create our own language during a conditional use, because that is the great advantage, the prescription of the conditional use. It is not tied to anything legal, actually, it's tied to judicial precedent that have been established by the commissioner or by the council. And so, I would caution about it, overly specific. In this case, less is more. But again, because to me it's irrelevant at this point, I know that in the end they're going to come in front of us. If my colleague feel that there is the need to be more specific, if you're comfortable leaving a night because we have, start to make definition of definition, I'm fine. In the end, it's not going to mean much, they're going to come in front of us and we can deny the application if we start to build a tent and no buffer, depending upon the logistic.
Which, I agree with you, Mr. Ramoni, that's very true. I think some of this, for some members of the commission, comes from past experiences, plus or minus, and I think your points are very well taken. I guess I would look at it and I'd say, are there things here that we know we would probably never approve? And then after that, I think you do get into the conditional use criteria, and we've been very specific with that, as you know, to say that, you know, a conditional, a variance does not set the stage for future variance. They're individual.
Yeah, I've just had a lot of that, call it PTSD on conditional uses. I don't think a conditional use has ever ended up being turned down. So anything that I can help with in terms of setting an expectation to people who are looking at this code as to what the intent is, I think saves everybody a lot of grief.
I do have a question to the commissioners about the trailers, is that that location, the majority of light use, light industrial use is a trucking business in nature, and that the trailers, that might be, I foresee that as a staff level, could be something that we get a lot of inquiries about, and not just inquiries, but it's, we need some more information about that trailer name.
Yeah, that was what I was about to say.
I, and I'm seeing the same thing, I'm just guessing that maybe Mr. Wilcox is, I don't want to speak for you, but I guess I will. You're probably thinking of just trailers stored there for a long period of time with stairs on the end of them and people going in and out.
Right.
That'd be correct?
Yes.
And that's what comes to my mind, but then I think we end up hitting it too hard because all of these businesses store things in their trailers and move them around. And it's kind of like you're taking the FedEx and the Amazon, all of them, and make it very hard for them to operate efficiently. Actually, I don't know how they can do it.
We've gotten, just in the last two weeks, about a pre-op close to that. It's not in the light industrial, but it's just adjacent to that for a construction company to put a padding for truck trailer. So it's an inquiry that we do get a lot, and it's a very active trucking environment.
The way you're using portable, it's so wide-ranging and vague. I mean, it could be an RV storage facility like on Marine Drive. Walls trucking could be considered portable because they're in and out of the, you know, any truck yard, walls trucking or swift, you know, you could consider that portable storage. But that, you know, that's a whole different thing than plopping down a bunch of shipping containers on the gravel pad, is an entirely different thing.
But as far as truck trailers, we would be addressing the shipping containers in conditional use.
As intended or as drafted anyway, any type of storage facility is going to be addressed.
Be conditional, yeah.
I would say, kind of echoing Ms. Farrell's point, and I think this is where staff has to think of its posterity too, because we're not going to be here forever. No, we're not actively looking forward, by the way, but, you know, our experience in reading and trying to interpret the code day to day to day is sometimes we see money and we're like, what was the context behind it? And I think we would be concerned that tents, I think we could be comfortable with. Trailers is where it gets a little dicey for us, given the level of inquiry and just that trailer can mean a wide variety of things. If this was truly a permitted use that we were seeking, I think absolutely you have to be very conclusive for what you're seeking, but we think that you have room to still regulate it accordingly on a case-by-case basis.
In addition to that, my other concern is, as a planner, I've been taught that variance is the last card that you would advise anyone to go through. So if we do put trailers there and they fall within that trailer, and you want to apply for a variance, and they do so, but to Commissioner Glance's point about having a PTSD of conditional use is that you guys are going to have a lot of variance application, just the nature of that use. And then with the trailers too, you would hate for variances to keep getting approved because it travels with the property. It doesn't expire, whereas a conditional use does. So that's just the other cast, that if we do go into this very specific route, we might also create another system of other approvals for planning review that is a bit redundant for you.
So, can we pull trailers? Mr. Wilcox? Are you okay with that, at this level?
Do you mean pull trailers?
Take trailers out of the, of that definition right there and just address it in the continual conditional use process?
Yeah, sure, that'd be okay.
Okay. Okay, so I think we're good.
Are we leaving the words "but not including tents" in there?
Yeah, are you guys okay with tents in there? Anybody like tents?
Yep.
It makes sense also with our localized weather conditions too, because tents can fly.
Yeah, would fly, okay.
We don't get a lot of inquiries about tents, so...
Yeah, also fire department, we get to regulate them too, so by that time usually people want to build a building instead. Just also for FYI, while some of that deliberation was occurring, we did a quick word search for where portable shows up, and the only other instance outside of the sign definitions where portable shows up is about portable swimming pools or accessory structures.
Okay.
So if you're intending still to thinking about defining portable, there's only one other instance of it, but if you're comfortable enough where we're making progress here, then I think we've got to cut it.
Are we okay with this? Do we need something else? Good?
We're good.
Okay. Any nays? Okay. Carry on.
Those were the general definitions, I guess, were there other changes to definitions not brought up in deliberation?
Any other changes to definitions? I didn't hear any.
Cover the purpose statement. Conditional use is what we're talking about, that's even clearly the crux of it. There was some cleanup of the purpose statement, but nobody else had brought any other chapter or section up for deliberation.
Okay. All right, so...
And then basically, again, I don't recall there was any discussion on changing any of the decision criteria points that were drafted.
No, I don't think so. Everyone okay with the decision criteria?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so what we'd be looking at? Changes to 3163, 3171, right? Or we need the general definitions too?
Right, so it'd be for 1.02, oh, 1.020.12, point A, point 127. Be 3.161. That's it.
Okay. Woo-hoo. All right, you guys ready? So at this time, looking for a motion? For 7504, text amendments to Troutdale Development Code with the changes to A127 and 3161.
That was stated, so someone can just say so.
Nobody likes it, all right.
Mr. Chair, are you ready for a motion?
I am.
Okay, I move that we accept the code changes inclusive of the amendment to A127 and 3161 as presented, as amended.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Do I have a second? Okay, so we have a motion and a second for case file 7504, proposed text amendments to the Troutdale Development Code with the changes made to A127 and 3.161, motion by Commissioner Ramoni and seconded by Commissioner Witterin. And any discussion on the motion? Okay, Ms. Farrell?
Okay. Commissioner Witterin?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkett?
Can you come back to me?
Okay. Commissioner Wilcox?
Oh.
Commissioner Glance?
I'm fine with the definitions, but not the purpose, so I'm in the...
Okay. Commissioner Ramoni?
Yes.
Commissioners, sorry, Chair Staffison?
Yes.
Okay, so there is...
Commissioner Perkett?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, yes.
Okay. So there is four yays and two nays.
Two nays, okay. Okay, so that one passes and it goes on to city council. And actually, feel free to attend city council and testify as a private citizen, if you so feel inclined.
For the record, city council hearing dates are two Tuesdays from tonight, so two weeks from now, Tuesday the 25th will be the first hearing, and then the second hearing with potential decision would be September 8th, the two days, two Tuesdays after that. So Tuesday, 25th, Tuesday, September 8th, both, I think, seven, both meaning, appear to have a light agenda at the moment, so it should be pretty early in the evening.
Okay.
All right, from a staff update point of view, we've been very busy this summer. We have had a lot of construction activity occurring. The Eagle Ridge subdivision, which, excuse me, try that again, the Eagle Ridge Apartments, the ones that were at the corner of 242nd and Cherry Park, have received their first temporary COs for portions of the property, so residents actually moved in this past weekend, so we have our first residents up there. Other construction projects that are ongoing, we have also the Columbia Ridge subdivision, that was Mr. Herford and Ms. Moore's property at the end of Sturgis Lane. Foundations are being poured now for three houses there with another five on the way, so active construction there. Building permit, plan reviews are in for Lancaster Park, that was the townhome project off Haldie, and then Mr. Halsted and his townhome project, that was the one off Cherry Park Road across from the high school where we had that access concern in the rear neighborhood that got resolved. That is also underway with first TCOs expected in the next month or two.
They're being framed now?
They're being framed, yeah, actually most, yeah, the last building's now getting framed. So, yes, the economy nationally is not great, and yes, the state and the region have taken some hits, but we certainly have not seen any slowdown, certainly in construction. but we certainly have not seen any slowdown, certainly in construction. And as Ms. Farrell indicated, we still are getting some pre-apps here and there, so we keep humming until they fill up the hub anymore. Obviously, this is a atypical meeting evening for you all. You're back to regular scheduled programming, although with a different type of meeting next week, on next Wednesday, and that is going to be this body plus the additional core for the housing committee. And we will be talking specifically about next steps that we have to make, which will involve a comp plan or comprehensive plan code amendment to our housing section, gold ten. And that stems from the work that had been done during the housing needs analysis effort that started last year and kind of wrapped up this spring with the passage of the housing needs analysis. There are going to be some additional steps we have to take and Arini and I will cover that at my view next week, so we'll spare you tonight. Let's get out of here. Beyond that, the other bit of news I don't recall, we shared it with you. Amber Shackleford, who had been an administrative assistant for us for a single period, has been hired full time with us as an assistant planner. And Marley Boxler, many of you know who was started out with us as a planner, is now the city's new economic development coordinator, a new position. And we're thrilled to hang on to Marley in that new role and to welcome Amber full time. So we, Arini, are very fortunate to have a good team to work with. Arini, am I leaving out anything?
Sandy River Front Trail, we're moving forward with that part. We're going to the artist queue process and then the master plans for the park's master plan. It's also out of the. I think with the housing maintenance is, we will be moving forward with that. And just to remind you on top of what Chris said, it will start at six and thirty seven, given the nature of the meeting that we have. And we will send a reminder and the packets shortly with you this week.
We have already built an A break at seven thirty for you all, and that way we also make sure we don't want to choose from Zoom, make sure we make it.
Yeah, that is an issue, isn't it?
Yeah, the only catch is that we're not going to have pizza, so I'm really sorry.
Yeah, no pizza, sorry.
What's up with that?
Little bug floating.
And the meeting in itself will not be exactly the same as we had it before because we have wrapped up the course that Equino North West has been working with us about. It's a lot of the updating of the gold ten of our comp plan and also talking to you about finessing the strategy before we formally adopt it for. The timeline is looking at next year, so just one more look into the strategy itself and seeing if we missed anything else that we want to include, including some of the toolkits that Equino North West provided and their recommendation policy. On another staff news, I am expecting, so. I will be taking nat leave in November and December and starting part time. You want to let you guys know that that's going to be coming in the fall.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
So Sandy did this due to that.
Thinking.
Yeah, sure you were.
You looked like me when I saw the test.
Congratulations to Mike too.
Oh, thank you. We're very excited.
I think that's all we have for you, Mr. Chair, so.
Okay, commissioners, Commissioner Prickett?
I have nothing.
Okay. Commissioner Ramone?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Witterin?
All good here, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Glance?
Which night did you say started at six o'clock?
That would be next Wednesday.
So next Wednesday we start at six?
Yeah.
Mountain town. Okay, and Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes, I wanted to ask the commission as a whole about submitting minutes corrections in advance. So they'd all be in one place and kind of be done all in one fell swoop rather than one commissioner at a time. Just wanted to throw that idea out there.
Or we could just let you go first.
That works for me.
Okay.
I guess if that was an idea, if you wanted it as part of your packet, the only thing is we would, you know, we'd try to get the packets out at least a week in advance. So we would just want to set up the time parameter to make sure we have it. And we'd also have to work with Melissa, since she's our transcriptionist, to see about that capacity. But we can certainly look into it and propose the ideas for you at her next regular meeting. Not for next week, but the next regular.
But what would have to happen is since it's being submitted as part of the record, if let's say someone turned in comments in advance, someone would have to say, you know, Commissioner Witterin made these comments and go through them to get them into the record. So it'd be a little different process. I think we get to the same place. Is there, is that something you guys want to do or think about it or you want to have, I don't know? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just say let Paul go first.
Okay. Actually, Mr. Wilcox, I think there's support for you going first.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay. All right. If nobody has anything else, we will adjourn for this evening and we will all be back at six o'clock. Six o'clock next Wednesday. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, by Ms. Prickett and Ms. Glance and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, have a great evening, everyone. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good night, thank you, see you next week. Have a nice one.
See you next week. Have a nice week. Bye.
Bye bye.